All right. Good afternoon. Welcome, everybody, to the City Council Workshop for February 8, 2021. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be moderating today's workshop. First, I would like to call on the city clerk for the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Professor Tim Glover, and she's announced that she will not be joining us tonight, actually. Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
I'm here.
Councilmember Litchfield? Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I'm here.
Mayor Connolly, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
No changes, Mayor Connolly.
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
A move.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Call the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? You're muted.
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
That's five zero in approval, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll move right into new business. Madam Manager, item number one.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is a presentation by Tony Cannon with Greenville Utilities to discuss a possible transfer of the Bethel Water and Sanitary Sewer Systems to Greenville Utilities, an alternative to Mr. Cannon.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today. I have Chris Paget and Jeff McCauley with me, and we're gonna, Chris and I are gonna tag-team the presentation for you. What we want to do is bring you up to speed on where we are with Bethel. We've made quite a bit of progress over the last several months, and I'm gonna go ahead and try to share my screen here. Now. That's working great. There we go. You'll see that we've made a lot of progress as we go through this, and we are coming to the point where we're gonna need some decisions from City Council. You may recall that all property that we own, that Greenville Utilities acquires, is in the city of Greenville for use and benefit of Greenville Utilities. So you guys are a party to this agreement, and to help with that, we have been working with your council, and our general council has worked together, and we are using the services of a third attorney to help us with this. Jim Colley, who I know that is working with you on some other projects right now, and has done some of this type of work before around the Raleigh area. So he has some experience with this and has also already reviewed the agreement and started working for us in that regard. So I'm gonna ask Chris, if he would, to bring you up to speed on what we've assessed, where we are, and then we'll talk a little bit about next steps and some decision points going forward.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. I'll start with just a little information about Bethel's water and wastewater systems. You know, they have traditionally owned and operated those systems. They are quite small, about 750 customers for each service. And GUC currently operates and maintains those systems for them, as per an agreement that the GUC Board and Bethel Board approved back in May of last year. We have also provided them wholesale wastewater services and wholesale water cells for some time as well. These systems are, they've struggled a little bit over the years, mostly because of their size. They have trouble hiring and retaining qualified staff and reinvesting back into the systems the way that they're needed to be properly maintained. They also do carry some debt on these systems, so their rates are relatively high. And again, that's all kind of a result of the size primarily. So on the next slide, we'll begin kind of giving you a timeline of how we got to where we are today. And I won't review all of this in detail, but I will say that because we treat Bethel's system, their wastewater system, on a wholesale basis, and we know that system does have some INI, some inflow infiltration issues, that means that when it rains, some of the stormwater gets into that sewer system. We know that because we meter their stormwater, I mean their wastewater below, and we're aware of that. So from time to time, they would talk to us over the years about potentially taking over their systems, particularly when they get a high bill due to a lot of rain. But it was really in the summer of 2016 when not only did Bethel officials talk to us, but also representatives of the local government commission and state treasurer's office. They said there was a real interest in trying to find a permanent solution to these systems, that this was one community of multiple in the state that they were really interested in working with to find those solutions, and they asked us to be a partner in trying to figure something out. So in January of 2017, the GUC Board and the Bethel Board jointly approved a memorandum of understanding, just committing to work together to explore the feasibility. Most of the next several years was spent trying to find funding. We knew that there were capital needs on the systems, and we knew that relatively substantial funding would be needed in order to make this a feasible proposition. And made progress there early in 2020, about a year ago, February of 2020. The state awarded Bethel over four and a half million dollars in grants, and that money was really intended for two purposes. First, they wanted an inventory done of their systems and an assessment of their systems to understand what the true capital needs were, and then the remaining funds could be used to do those capital improvements. GUC, if you'll go to the next slide, you will see that from May to August, GUC spent a lot of time in Bethel doing the assessment of those systems, and I'll talk a little bit more detail about that in a few minutes, really just trying to identify what those capital improvements that were needed to bring it to a comparable level to GUC's system. Based on that work, our engineering staff provided to, developed and provided to engineering reports, one for each of the systems. They provided those to the state, and the state approved those reports, recognizing that these were, in fact, the needs of the systems. And then, most recently, our staff has been working with our rate consultant, Raftellus, to analyze Bethel's financials, their debt, the customer base, to try to develop what a rate structure might look like and a rate plan that would allow Bethel customers to become GUC retail customers while also continuing to pay off that debt service that they have on the systems. This next slide here shows the capital needs that were identified during those assessments. And just to be clear on what we did, we had crews out in Bethel. They did an assessment of the entire water system and the entire wastewater system. They went in and input the data from those systems into our GIS system so that we have like information for Bethel's system and ours. So it was an apples-to-apples comparison when we were looking at those. And when you look at, we also went in and used a sewerback truck to clean the entire sanitary sewer system, and then we camera TV'd the entire system as well. So we could go back and watch those tapes to understand where the issues might be in that sanitary sewer system that were leading to some of that INI concern that we had, that I mentioned a little bit earlier. You see the capital improvements that were identified through that process, and I'll tell you, if you look at those last two bullets on their wastewater, 53-point repairs on the existing collection system piping. So those are 53 locations within their sanitary sewer system where there were failures or holes where we needed to dig down and replace some of that piping. And then the last bullet, rehabilitation work on 118 manholes. They have a number of manholes in their system that aren't securely fastened, and that's leading to, obviously, when it rains and there's water in the streets, that water is getting to the system. So those were the two primary culprits that we found in terms of the INI, that we could find in terms of the INI and what that does to the amount of wastewater leaving their system when it rains. At the bottom of the slide there, you see that the engineering estimates that were done for these show that this needed capital can, in fact, be fully funded with the available funds, the available grant funds. A little over $100,000 was spent on the assessment. So there's right at 4.4 million remaining that could be used to address those capital needs. And now we're gonna move on to the Bethel Systems debt, and I believe Mr. Cannon's gonna say a few things here.
So one of the things that we knew we needed to take a look at was what their debt looked like on the system. And you'll see here, highlighted in yellow, this is the outstanding debt that's attributed to the water and wastewater systems. We are estimating that the end of June, when the transfer would likely take place, they'll have about $3.5 million in outstanding debt from what you see highlighted here, and they also have a loan from the Bethel General Fund in the amount of about $250,000. You can see that their interest rates range from 0.125% all the way to 4.5%, and some of these terms go out for a long time. You see the maturity date there is over, all the way up to 2052 on a couple of those series right there. So a really long time of this debt. We took a look at this and what needed to be done, and we think we can refinance this debt and gain a net present value savings of around $655,000. That's assuming an interest rate of 2.15% for 20 years. So that's important as we look at these next few slides on what we did to address these rates and how we're gonna handle this debt moving forward. This is our current rate. So we have in-city rates and out-of-city rates. Those are the two rates that we have right now related, you know, talking mainly here about residential customers, and that's on wastewater, okay? Of water. We have in-city and out-of-city water rates. We have a flat wastewater rate. So we looked at that, and after discussions with the board and with the city manager and the mayor, we went back to the drawing board and calculated what a rate would be for municipality that is outside the city of Greenville. So what we're trying to do here is the same thing that our charter is set up to do, and that is to encourage planned growth within the city and within the ETJ. So you see that this new calculated rate is really a split between the in-city and the out-of-city rates that we showed earlier. It includes a surcharge to the citizens of Bethel, and this will be to cover the debt that we refinance. So this is refinancing the debt for 20 years. It'll be recovered in that surcharge to those existing customers in Bethel and any new customers that would come along could pay it off earlier. And you can see that doing this, we would be able to reduce their bill about 23% in the first year. So $24.54, that's a significant reduction. Their typical bill right now is $106.20. That's an annualized bill for water and sewer. Their new bill, year one, which would be fiscal year '22, would be $81.66. So a fairly significant reduction that we're able to hold over a number of years. So that work has been done, and we have reviewed this with Bethel. They seem to be in a good place with this. We have some decision points coming up that are gonna require votes from both our board and from the council, and also Bethel. First, in March of '21, you know, we came to you recently about a debt refunding that we're planning to do in the next few months, and we want to, within that, go ahead and refund this system debt that Bethel has to achieve those savings, to help further that. In April, we plan to come back to you with the transfer agreement. So that would be approved by Bethel. It'd be approved by the Greenville City Council, and it'll be approved by our board. And this is to allow us to get to the July 1 transfer date. Also, in April, we will go to the local government commission for the approval of the debt issuance. From April to June, we would start transferring those customers. So we have to go out, we have to install new meters, we have to get all of their spilling data put into our system, and then we have to have all those customers set up, and it would give us a couple of months then to do, really, a dry run to make sure that when we make that transfer on July 1, that it's smooth and it works seamlessly within our system. May, sometime in the May-June timeframe, we would sell the bonds and refinance the debt, and then that would allow for a July 1 transfer date. So a lot of work to be done here over the next few months, and there's gonna be some decision points with the city council. We think that, that's one of the reasons, after we had the discussion with the mayor and the city manager, that us getting a joint council to work together on this, Jim Colley, will be very beneficial and allow for a smooth transition so everyone can work on this together going forward. Just to summarize everything, we've made pretty good progress. We have the money available to do the needed repairs, to get that system up to our standards. We're gonna be able to, with the debt refinancing and the grants from the state, we're gonna be able to achieve about a 23% savings in year one and provide a return on investment to the citizens of Greenville. This is assets that will then be on the books that the citizens of Greenville will own. We do think that there may be an opportunity in our conversations with the state to further lower those rates in Bethel, which are still going to be fairly high, but to further lower those rates if we can find some grant money to help repay some of that debt. We're hopeful that that can happen, but we're laying forward a scenario that we know we can manage. Get the transfer agreement signed and then transfer the system July 1. We'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Smiley?
Tony, are there any, are the volumes involved in this have any impact on the, you may have already planned for them, but what is the impact on the expansions to the water treatment plant and the enhanced capacity of the wastewater treatment plant?
Okay, so, you know, we're already selling them water. As Chris mentioned earlier, we have wholesale agreements with them for water and wastewater. So we're treating their water now, we're treating their wastewater now. We will see some improvement in their volumes, but to be perfectly honest, when you talk about 750 homes, it's about the size of a large subdivision. So it's gonna be a fairly minimal impact. Once we correct that INI problem up there, it's just gonna save them money on the retail side, and we will benefit by some reduction in INI for the plant, but it's not a large volume that we're treating right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Litchfield?
Yeah, Tony, a couple of quick questions. So the grants are fully funding the expense of the work that's, you know, planned to be done. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So when we look at the 750 customers that Bethel currently has, are there any concerns or issues with large outstanding balances or a large percentage of 750 that aren't paying their bills currently?
There were some concerns early on when we first started looking at this back in 2016. I will say that Bethel has done a really good job getting that cleaned up over the last couple of years, and we don't see any significant balances out there that are of concern to us right now.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Mr. Cannon?
Thank you for letting us provide you an update, and we'll be back to you in March with some action items.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, item number two.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is a presentation about emergency communications. This follows up on a study that the city engaged with Tulsa Communications to look at a variety of issues and possible needs around how we do emergency communications. I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Griffin, and he will introduce our speaker. Chief Griffin?
Thank you, Madam Manager. Good evening, our mayor and council. This afternoon, we have with us Alan Talkington from the Tulsa Group. So over the last couple of years, the department has went through several big assessments, one of those being the fire accreditation process, as well as North Carolina Department of Insurance with our reading and response survey. What we saw in both of those were some recommendations of areas that we could improve around our communication system. So in order to be able to really look in depth to communications in general for public safety throughout the city, we engaged with Tulsa to come in and do an in-depth analysis of our communication system. So today, we have Mr. Talkington, who will go through a short presentation, as well as the lead on the project was Brian Better, which is our fire marshal here in the city agreement. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Talk.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city councilmen and women. Again, my name is Alan Talkington with Tulsa Consulting. I'm gonna do a screen share here and start working through this presentation. Can everybody see that? Very good? Okay, great. So again, thank you for your time today. As the chief talked about, we covered a vast array of topics with the public safety communication. This presentation today is gonna cover some of the very important immediate needs. There is a partnering report, as the chief talked about, that covers a wide variety of items that were identified and different things that could be done, processes that could be used to improve those, or just different recommendations with those. So with that, I'll give you just a quick agenda here. Again, my name is Alan Talkington. Another person who couldn't join us today, I mentioned earlier, his name was Dennis Ward. He also assisted on this project from Tulsa Consulting. We're gonna talk about just how things work today with 911 and emergency call flow, talk about how we got this information, the next steps and the needs for those, and then also long-term needs as well. So with that, just a quick overview, this is how a 911 call happens today. You'll see there's kind of a split here, and I'll explain very quickly how that works. All 911 calls come into the Pitt County 911 Call Center today. It's in the basement of the older hospital there in town. And if it is a call that has any sort of fire or EMS or any, you know, type of life-saving apparatus to it, they immediately start the call process, start getting forth, you know, information from where it's at and getting people involved with that. If there is no fire or EMS involved whatsoever, they will, at that time, once they've assessed that, transfer it to the appropriate law enforcement. However, if fire and EMS, as I said, is involved at all, they have to go through their processes before law enforcement gets involved. And as you can see here, the county call taker takes the call. It either transfers it to law enforcement if there is no fire EMS or starts to do the fire and EMS dispatching and then involves law enforcement once their process is done. And this is an important call flow that's in the report, just to give you an idea of the steps taken before city personnel is involved, specifically, in this case, law enforcement. So how we got this information? We have our processes here that's called the inspection, investigation, interview. Just some quick overview about that. The investigation, we term as gathering the documentation, just reading through how things are outlined internal with your paperwork and your processes. We also did an interview process. We did both onsite and virtual interviews with a vast array of different people from fire, from EMS, from city dispatch, from county dispatch, and just really gathered information from all sorts of people involved with public safety for the city. And then finally, we did the inspection process, which included going to different radio sites, making sure we saw the towers, the electronics, the components, everything. That really was the eyes on for all of your equipment to understand what was there and what maybe needed to be done moving forward. So the immediate needs. These four items are what are listed in the report as the immediate next steps. Again, I do talk about later on here, there are many more needs, and their response is outlined in that report, but these are the four big key ticket items here. The first one, acquiring end-user radios for both GPD and GFAR. These are your portable handheld radios that rest on their hip, vehicular-mounted radios, radios that are in the fire stations and police station, things like that, just your end-user radios. The second item, the dispatching agreement with Pitt County. There is a rather old agreement that we'll go over in a little more detail later on that outlines the requirements for Pitt County to do the dispatching for the city. And it's, as I said, it's a very small document, and there's some additional detail and rigor that's needed around that. The third item is interoperability and coverage concerns. So one of the key items is that the radios themselves, while they do need to be replaced, they also don't necessarily work in all the areas that, you know, are we're moving forward with in the growth. So we want to make sure that the overall coverage is where it needs to be, and we have optimal usage for those radios in the system. And then finally, the type of dispatch center moving forward and the backup center concerns with that, talking about city dispatching, county dispatching, a unified front. There's a lot of different options with how we do dispatching in the city moving forward. So the next slide's get into some more detail here. The end-user radios. A majority of the radios used by the city's police and fire departments are past their end of life. As we see in the second bulletin here, the 649 of the public safety radios were discontinued for sale between May 13 of 2013 through the end of October of 2014. And then support for those radios ended in 2018. Now, there are some parts available, but it's becoming more and more scarce as we go along, so it just gets more and more difficult to maintain those. And our recommendation on this was to consider an RFP process to determine options for acquisition of these new radios that would provide the city with any optimal value that could be found through a competitive process. Now, that being said, it doesn't mean the radios aren't working. They are certainly working. Everybody is still talking. We're not, you know, dead in the water. But it's just as we go forward, as radios break, things like that, finding parts to fix them, it becomes more and more difficult because there is no maintenance support for those from the manufacturer. And on top of that, you know, transitioning to these radios that will have long-term support. We looked at 15 years of support in our model that's broken out in the report, and so that's just kind of the idea that we're looking at from a timeframe. Any questions on this slide right now about the radios before I move on?
Okay. When were they purchased? If they were stopped being, this is Councilman Smiley, if they're supported in 2018 and they were discontinued for sale in 2013 and 14, when did the city buy them?
Chief, I know if you want to give a little more detail, we have a lot of purchase date information that dates back into the 2000s, but I don't know, Chief, if you want to give some more detail on that.
Yeah, Chief Better was part of that process, if he could chime in.
It was around the, Councilmember Smiley, it was around the 2008 timeframe, '07, '08, '09 timeframe, and they were all purchased on a grant. I think it was called the COPS Tech Grant, and so the police and fire rescue. That's why most of our radios are all from the same era or vintage because they were all originally purchased at the same time.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
The second slide, talking about the dispatch agreement. So overall, as I mentioned earlier, the city fire rescue is dispatched by Pitt County. The agreement that it currently exists is a very short, essentially a one-page document. There are multiple signature pages and things like that, but effectively, the bulk of it is a single page, and it doesn't provide any goals or requirements that Pitt County Dispatch must maintain or achieve. So it just limits some of the requirements that the city wants to move forward with. It's a handshake agreement, effectively, for the county dispatch services that was signed on July 10 of 2000, and it really hasn't been modified to be able to keep up with current standards. With the concerns that have arisen around the assessments that were done, that the chief mentioned earlier, we really recommend that we need to revisit that agreement, outline some more detail, and really build it up to modern standards that outline response times, data information, data retention for long-term auditing as well. So it really goes around performance milestones and requirements to ensure that the information that's needed from the city is available when these assessments and these audits are done. Any questions for this topic here? Very good. And I'll have a slide at the end where we can talk about more overall questions as well. So I have two slides here that talk about the radio interoperability and the coverage. Interoperability, when I use that term, it speaks the ability of the radio user to communicate with agencies outside of the city for public safety and public service purposes, and it also can include other city, county, state, and federal entities. There were some issues that were outlined, however, they've already started to be addressed simply through training items. The chief here, we've talked about extensively where, with the city manager, that a lot of the training apparatus didn't include some of the pieces that the radios were able to do, different channels, different people they were able to talk to. So as we've addressed that, a lot of these items in the report have been taken care of. However, the overall use, as I mentioned earlier, has some struggles with the coverage and where the radio actually work. As I mentioned here, a lot of the lack of coverage in the key areas are for public safety agencies. Currently, your system is on the statewide Viper radio system, and even if you were to choose, depending on which path we discuss moving forward, it does not necessarily mean that you would require to relinquish any sort of your dispatch services. I know as we I know as we talk about here on the fourth bullet, what you're going to do for dispatch moving forward, just understand that we talk about different options moving forward on how to improve that coverage. Any of these options don't require you to relinquish that. You can maintain your control over your dispatch however you choose to moving forward. So the second slide here goes into some more details. This is just a map here of where coverage is at. This red area is specifically talking about large, thick buildings. If you were to have, say, a school or a church, things like that, there's just some difficulty that can happen in a building of that stature inside this red area. And you'll see on the left is your current coverage with the single tower in, you know, just kind of east of downtown, the downtown district of the city there. And it really limits some of the coverage along different areas in the city. Whereas we compare that on the right with the county's existing system coverage, you can see churches, schools, gymnasiums, large buildings, you know, movie theaters on the right side there would have a lot better in-building coverage using that. Now, the overall outdoor coverage is there, the on-the-street, on-a-sidewalk vehicles driving around is pretty decent. I think, you know, Chief could talk to that, Chief Griffin talked that a little bit, but it's really struggling when we start identifying buildings and using these in-b buildings, which as you may or may not know, there's just a growing use case with in-building response, medical, fire, things like that, it's just only getting more and more. So at the bottom there, I listed two bullet points in our report that we talked about ways to improve that. You could work with the county, as you see on the right, to utilize their existing system to expand your coverage, or you could take the state system that you're on and add towers to that to expand that coverage to really reach those in-building struggles that you have right now. Any questions about the interoperability or the coverage discussion? All right, continuing on. The fourth bullet point here, the type of dispatching and the backup center considerations for them. Right now, TUSA's recommendation is that the city should analyze consolidation, some sort of dispatching for Greenville Police and Greenville Fire Rescue. Consideration should be given to projected resource and capital needs with the operational benefits. What that's saying basically is, we have seen and put the analysis in the report for what 15 years of dispatching looks like with different options, keeping it the way it is right now, looking at the city doing all of it, looking at some sort of a unified front with the county where there's a joint dispatch center, and we outlined the different financial sides of that as well and the operational requirements for that. Excuse me. The second bullet point talks about the backup center. There are some difficulties with your existing backup center. The radio controllers that are used by the dispatchers in the backup center cannot send tones for alerting firefighters and fire rescue units, say, in the middle of the night. The current system also can't select multiple talk groups and connect them together. And so if you were to have a situation where you have fire, law, attending a scene together, they're not going to be able to talk to each other easily in that backup center if there was some sort of an evacuation from the primary center. And that just goes into that last point there, where just it really limits the capabilities in that backup center should you need to use it. Your options for a backup center, though, greatly expand if a joint county operation were to be explored. Specifically, what this is talking about is the new consideration for a dispatch center at the fire station that's being built. It really opens up a lot of the possibilities if it is a joint venture versus keeping separate county and city operations. However, all those considerations have been made within the report.
So when you're talking about a backup center, the current backup center, you're talking about the city's current backup center?
That is correct.
The emergency management center?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Very good. And so really quick, I want to touch on just a couple other key items that were in the report. One of the next key items here is the individual unit mobile data terminals and the vehicular location. These kind of go hand-in-hand, but what we really talk about in the report is the need to be able to push information out to those field units and be able to track and keep reports about where they moved to and what their traffic was. And this was an item in the assessment, the recent audit that was done that Chief Griffin mentioned, that the auditors couldn't get good handle on when units were leaving the station, when they arrived on scene, and when they were returning. There was a lot of information, but some of the ways that the CAD system keeps that information lost a bit of those date and timestamps. So they weren't able, they were just incomplete, and so they weren't able to get all that information there by keeping some sort of a vehicle location system that allows you to have granular detail of when they leave, when they arrive, when they return, and really fill out the breadth of that data that was looked at in the audit. And then again, on the mobile data terminals, this also enhances the ability for dispatchers to push information out. As you can probably imagine, when there's a big structure fire, there may be five, 10 different units that are responding on the radio, so it's very difficult for dispatchers to get information out when everybody's talking. What this can do is have the ability for that to be automated, where, you know, if it's a law enforcement scene, a suspect, you know, who's there on scene, if it's a fire rescue type situation, you know, what people they may need, whether it be translation services, whether they need special medical attention, whatever is there, that can be pushed out automatically, and a lot of that can be expanded hand-in-hand, both the MDTs and the location. The second item here is a continuing process that's actually been going on for some time. It is the CAD-to-CAD integration. One of the key points that was very wise from the city's side is that it purchased a CAD system that is the same manufacturer as both the county and as ECU and as the Sheriff's Department. And so because everybody is in the same house, the same manufacturer, the process to connect them was obviously a lot easier than if they were different manufacturers. And the IT department within the city has been working with ECU as kind of the beta test, the beginning of that, and then hoping to, once that's done, expand that on to the county as well to be able to connect these together. So when a call comes in with 911, they don't have to wait for the county to call the city to process that information, but rather, that can be all automated as soon as it's put into the systems, the city can see it, can start pushing out units much quicker. So it really just speeds the response time up from within the city's dispatch site. And it also improves records management, because now that you have that direct connection, you're not waiting to get that information later on, a few months down the road or weeks down the road, pushed from the county to you, you can have live, instant access to that. And again, as I mentioned at the beginning, there are a number of other needs and those proposed solutions listed in the full report, but these were the key, I'd say, big-ticket items that we really wanted to touch on for today's presentation. And again, I just wanted to recap really quick here what those immediate next steps are. We talked about the RFP process for public safety radios, that would be item number 1A in our side, and then 1B would be the dispatch agreement, updating that agreement with the county to make sure that you guys have the rigor and the necessity around all the data information requirements and goals that your city needs to meet all those auditing requirements. The third item here, the interoperability and coverage, making sure the radios work where they need to work, when you need them to work, and what options you have to improve that. And then finally, the type of dispatch center and its corresponding backup center moving forward. And with that, I know that's a lot of information, but I'll open myself up for questions, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have. All right, thank you very much. Any questions?
If, could you go back to the slide on the radio coverage, please?
Absolutely. This one or the first one?
Either one will be fine.
Okay.
So essentially, the one on the right, you're saying is what is, you know, the bandwidth is already out there with the county's towers, right?
That's correct. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
I was going to say, are those, you know, is, are there any capacity issues there? I mean, if, is that, you know, do they, could they take, presuming we got the right equipment, right, that was compatible, then, you know, do they have, you know, I know that, you know, people talk about, you know, radio frequency as having bandwidth questions, you know, issues, and you can only have so many devices or anything like that, but is there a, is that sort of thing an issue with those towers at all?
Yeah, and so you read right into my mind of what I was going to say as well. So the one thing with this is that capacity is something that we would have to look at. Our initial investigation into it, although it wasn't as detailed, because that was a county system, and we couldn't really look at the county versus the city on this side, but we were able to see some into the county system dispatch. There was very kind enough to let us see the technical side behind the scenes a little bit. They have a pretty, they have a pretty wide amount of bandwidth left over from what they're using right now, not to say that it's unlimited capacity. There is going to be some capacity concerns. There's obviously at least 649 radios plus ones that have been upgraded since then, so well upwards of 700 radios that would need to be joined onto the system that could really put a hamper on their capacity. But they operate in a manner that allows for two conversations per frequency. In technical terms, we call it phase two, but really what that allows is a single frequency can add two conversations. And so it may only need to be a single frequency added to the totality of their system that allows for that additional capacity for your regular needs. So that assessment can be done and really delved into, you know, should the county allow us to really get into the weeds on the system, but I don't suspect from what we've seen so far that there will be something where you need to add, you know, 10 frequencies to it or something grandiose, but probably in the neighborhood of one to two frequencies would handle the capacity that you would need.
And there, and Councilmember Smiley, there are also some financial considerations as well.
I think they were probably talking about financial considerations for all of this.
Yeah, so obviously, at the minimum, the subscribers, we talked about that. And then when it comes to any agreements that maybe need to add with the county on this, but from our side, from the technical side, the coverage is there, the towers are in the correct location, it's just a matter of adding capacity if needed, and then whatever other agreements need to be worked out between the city and the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, Mayor, we will, over the next couple of weeks, work on certainly the first three items that Alan has mentioned. That is the, thank you, Alan, the radio acquisition and the RFP for that process. We will start having conversations with the county about their dispatch, and then we will bring to the council some alternatives related to the interoperability of the radio system. We just, these are some items that we just wanted you to be aware of the background and the need for those, and as we further dive into emergency communications. Okay? Awesome.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Move on to item number three.
Thank you, Mayor. The third item is a presentation by the city attorney's office on the city council conducting a quasi-judicial hearing. And with that, I will turn it over to City Attorney McGirt.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Mayor and council members, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Let me share my screen here. Okay, Mayor and council, I'm here to talk about quasi-judicial proceedings in preparation for a master planned community special use permit that council will consider on this Thursday, February the 11th meeting. So I just want to talk a little bit about quasi-judicial proceedings. Council very rarely conducts these type of proceedings. I think it's been a long time before, since you've done one of these proceedings. So why are we here? Again, there's a special use permit application that will be considered by council on February the 11th. State law, case law, and statute provides that quasi-judicial procedures must be followed when council considers a special use permit. Now, what is a quasi-judicial decision? What is quasi-judicial decision-making? Let's back up a second. Governmental entities make three types of decisions: administrative, legislative, or quasi-judicial. What is an administrative decision? An administrative decision is a perfunctory or a ministerial decision, one that does not involve the exercise of discretion. If an applicant has to fill out a application completely and accurately and pay the associated fee, there's no discretion in that. Who approves those type of administrative decisions? Typically, that's staff. Some examples are a site plan or a building permit. That's the example of an administrative decision. Now, the area where you are usually operating in is legislative decision. What is a legislative decision? That is when council approves a rule or a policy by which the city is governed. Who approves legislative decisions? Usually, that's the domain of the council. It is subject to council's discretion, a zoning decision or a city code. But the city council does have some parameters you must follow, enabling statutes and constitutional limitations. Some examples of a legislative decision is a zoning decision, a zoning ordinance text change, a change to the comprehensive plan, a city code text amendment, like an amendment to an housing code. But where you're going to operate in on this coming Thursday is the quasi-judicial area. What is a quasi-judicial decision? It's a decision involving the finding of facts regarding standards in the ordinance and the exercise of discretion when applying the standards in the ordinance. Quasi-judicial decision-making, who usually operates in this area? HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission, when they approve a certificate of appropriateness, the standards in the code talks about quasi-judicial procedures. The Board of Adjustment, that's all they do, is a quasi-judicial board that grants variances, that hears appeals of administrative decisions, and special use, just special use permit applications. Now, council on this Thursday, you're going to consider a special use permit application involving a master planned community. The zoning code provides that in this area, when a applicant is seeking a master planned community, like a golfing community, or in this case, an agricultural community, the council has to approve that. What are some of the do's and don'ts when you have a quasi-judicial decision, when you're making a QJ decision? The board, the council should not engage in ex parte communications. That means you shouldn't talk with the applicant or opponents about the merits of the case, how you feel about it, how you plan to vote. You're supposed to make your decision based on the evidence that is presented during the hearing. So there's, ex parte communications are prohibited. You should avoid speaking with anyone about the special use permit application prior to the hearing. If you inadvertently speak to someone about the application prior to the public hearing, those conversations should be disclosed at the hearing. You may drive by the site prior to the hearing if you feel that would be helpful. So again, quasi-judicial, it means like a judicial decision. So this is similar to a court proceeding. The council will act as a jury. You will weigh the evidence that is presented by the applicant or opponents and make findings of fact from those, from the evidence that's presented. So for instance, if a standard is that the applicant has to show that the proposal will not injure property values, the applicant, the applicant may present a real estate professional to say, this proposal actually enhances property values if you look at similar projects in other areas. So you act as a jury, you weigh the evidence, you'll find facts, you act as the judge, you are sure that procedural safeguards are adhered to, and you will apply the facts to the law. What's the source of the law for this special use permit? We can get you copies of the provisions. It's zoning sections 9481, that deals with the general standards for issuing a special use permit, and 9-4-166, that deals with the standards for issuing a use permit for a master planned community. You may recall back in October, you actually amended the zoning text amendment to allow master planned communities of an agricultural nature. So some of the standards will be, the master planned community will not adversely affect health and safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. The community will not injure by value or otherwise adjoining or abutting property values or public improvements, or in the alternative, the use is a public necessity. The staff, the planning staff will provide a report of the analysis of the general findings and the review factors before the hearing starts. Evidence at the public hearing. The applicant and any opponents must put on evidence demonstrating conformance or non-conformance with the general findings and the review factors. The city attorney will assist with any evidentiary questions that arise during the hearing if someone objects to some evidence that's being submitted. The following rules of evidence apply. The clerk or the mayor could also swear in witnesses, and all witnesses are sworn to tell the truth. So it's kind of a formal hearing, you're under oath. Witnesses are subject to cross-examination. Hearsay testimony, an out-of-court statement. So if person A says, well, person B said this happened, or these are some evidence, this is some evidence that you should consider, or somebody tries to submit a letter that someone else wrote, that's considered hearsay if that witness is not there, and that should not be admitted into evidence. Evidence at the public hearing, only experts may offer opinion testimony. Types of opinion testimony that will likely be offered, it would be beneficial if an applicant came armed with somebody who could talk about the impact of the proposed use on the value of neighboring property. So typically, an applicant may bring a real estate professional to testify how the use will impact property values, or they may have an expert to talk about how, whether increased traffic from the proposed use... increased traffic from the proposed use poses a danger to the public. Experts must be qualified through education and/or experience. The applicant or the opponent could tender them as an expert, and the mayor would rule on, on whether or not they were an expert with the assistance from the city attorney's office. Evidence at the public hearing, the evidence must be material, competent, and substantial. These evidentiary standards apply to everyone, the applicant, the opponents, and the council in making this decision. Now, this is very important, this is how you're gonna make your decision, and you, and you're able to vote Thursday. It's not like the other, other public hearings where you have to continue them to the, to, you know, to allow the public comment 24 hours after the public hearing, but you can vote actually on this on Monday, on Thursday night. So the, the standard for making the decision is as follows. If the applicant offers evidence that council finds to be material, competent, and substantial with regard to the general findings and review factors, then the applicant has met its legal burden, and the application must be approved. The applicant, the applicant actually arguably has a property right if he makes, if, if, if the, if the applicant makes their case. However, opponents can similarly offer evidence, and if the council finds that the opponent has offered material, competent, and substantial evident, evidence that persuades council that the general findings are not satisfied, then council should deny the application. Council's decision must be based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and the application of the evidence to the findings and the review factors. Liking an application or not is not relevant to the council's ultimate determination. And, and it's important to remember, again, this, this impacts property rights, so an applicant or an opponent could appeal council's decision pursuant to state statute to, to the trial court, to the superior court for review. So that's the presentation and available for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, it's just.
Give us a second.
How much of this information has been given to opponents or potential opponents to people who would speak in opposition because, you know, if somebody shows up and says, hey, I'm opposed to this, and you look at them and said, have you brought an expert with you in order to, um, you know, to, because you're not allowed to say that yourself? That's not, you know, that's not going to seem very friendly or democratic or, uh, or, like we're taking public input. So my concerns on this are do the people who are participating in this have a good understanding of what's gonna happen if they come to council? They're used to being able to come and say, hey, you know, this, this bothers me, it impacts me, I live nearby, I've got a problem. You know, and if they were determined not to be expert, because, yeah, they live nearby, but, you know, they're a school teacher, not a real estate professional, so they don't get to have opinions about their, uh, what they've got opinions, it just can't be treated, be treated as facts?
Well, first of all, persons who are abutting property owners were given notice pursuant to state law, and staff can talk about who received notice, but the, um, abutting property owners pursuant to state law were, were given notice of this by a letter. The prop, the property should have been posted. I haven't driven out there, but I'm sure the property is posted with a sign that there will be this quasi judicial hearing coming up. And also persons within a certain distance of the proposal have been given notice. Everybody who's an opponent is not necessarily have a right to bring an expert, only somebody who can act like a party. To act like a party, you have to have what the court calls standing. And if somebody, they have to prove that they have standing, and, and we could talk about that, if, if it got that technical. But if a person can show special damages different from the rest of the community, if they live in close proximity, uh, so standing, standing differs from case to case, but only a person with standing would have a right to come and bring witnesses and act like a party. If somebody received a letter, then I think we make the presumption that maybe they do have standing. So if someone came with a letter and said, hey, I, I received, I received notice of this hearing, and I need time to prepare, that's, that's a council decision. But only persons who receive notice, we give the presumption that they have standing.
Well, my concern is that, you know, when you go to the courthouse, you know, you understand that you're entering a court and you have to, you know, and that there's a, you know, you might need a lawyer. When you come to council, we spend a lot of time, you know, encouraging people to, you know, come tell us your concerns. And now we're setting up a, or we are engaged in a process where they won't be able to do that in quite the same way. And I'm just wondering, have, you know, what, what efforts have been made to make these rules clear to, you know, people who may be showing up Thursday night?
Yeah, well, I just told you, I think Ms. Gooby may have, is on.
Yeah, I, I can answer your question. As, as the city attorney stated, we sent letters, we posted notice, we also put ads in the newspaper, and within those letters, we gave, um, a, first of all, we gave them specific directions, which was to contact us if they had any questions or they wished to speak. And also it had a handout in there talking about quasi judicial hearings and what constitutes, you know, this procedure. So it does set out the considerations that have to be made as far as the hearing is concerned. And so that is our due diligence in notifying those that are within, who are abutting the property of the hearing. So far, to my knowledge, we have received one phone call and one email. None of those folks that I'm aware of, at least as far as up till this afternoon, has asked to actually speak at the hearing. I also, I did not hear directly from the developer, but I did receive a message from his representative saying that the developer met with the neighborhood early this morning to talk about the project and answer any questions. So I have not had any more follow up from anyone about wanting to speak or having additional questions about the hearing on Thursday night.
But, but again, to answer Councilmember Smiley's question, we did provide a letter in the, the, a fact sheet in the letter that talked about quasi judicial proceedings and how to engage, and as well as provided emails and phone numbers to contact staff.
Is that flyer, is the detail of that in the agenda? If it's not, could you ask the clerk, could you get the clerk and ask him to send, to see if he can send us a copy? And then when there was some emails that went around a few day, couple days ago, I forwarded the ones I got to the clerk and the manager. Have those people been included in, were those, you included in your response with Chantay?
I'm not sure if we're talking about the same emails or not.
I think we, I think, I don't, I don't, I want to be careful, Councilmember Smiley, that we don't get too far down a path that maybe we should reserve for the meeting, but we, I believe one of the people who responded was somebody who, no, I take that back. I'm not sure that that was a person that would ever say.
I got an email, I forwarded the staff and was told, don't ask, don't talk to this person, it's a quasi judicial matter. So I'm assuming that we're talking about the same thing. And so my question is, if I'm not allowed to respond to that person, has an appropriate member of city staff responded to those people and given them the information about the correct, the proper, the, the ways in which they are eligible to engage in this issue?
Um, we will, we will verify that.
I think Monica forwarded, Congressman, Councilman Daniels, I think, at, at least, also got that up. Should be a congressman one day. I don't think I'm getting, I'm just getting a little ahead of myself.
I think a number of the council members did.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smiley, you're talking about legal rights of opponents and persons being adequately presented in a formal hearing. The applicant and the opponents have a right, like anybody else, to engage a land use lawyer who does this type of work to represent them. Sometimes a party or an opponent may come armed with an attorney, but they're, they're not necessarily required to, but, um, of course, anybody could seek, uh, professional guidance about these type of matters.
I just want to know, I want to know that they may have to, right? I mean, that's my question. I don't want people showing up and saying, hey, I'm here to talk about this, and the mayor having to look at them and say, I'm sorry, you don't have standing, and you don't, you're not an expert witness in this, so you can't tell us anything. That's gonna be frustrating for all concerned.
Sometimes the council, councils, from my experience, or boards may allow persons to speak, but they may say that the evidence is incompetent. So it's not, it's not necessarily, the council doesn't necessarily have to shut them down, but they, they, they can, the council could inform them that that is not, cannot be used in, in determining whether the standards have been met or not.
Yeah, the mayor's gonna love telling people they're incompetent. He likes to tell us that, but he isn't.
The evidence is incompetent, that's what I meant.
Yeah, he's in love saying that, too.
This comes up at Board of Adjustment meetings all the time, right? I mean, this is.
That's, that's correct.
We field this at Board of Adjustment meetings all the time.
That's correct.
All right, so, I mean, the city staff is prepared to handle it, I presume, just as you would in a Board of Adjustment meeting, right?
Any other questions? Saying none, that's it. Madam Manager, is that correct? You're on mute.
Mute, I'm on mute. Um, yes, Mayor, that's it for the workshop. We will convene back at, at 6 o'clock.
All right. Again, thank you, Attorney McGirt, for the presentation. We look forward to our first quasi judicial hearing on Thursday. So I need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All right, motions were made by Councilmember Litchfield, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call the city clerk for the vote.
All right, Councilmember Daniels?
Uh.
I'm sorry, I don't see your video. If you could just announce yourself.
Counselwoman Daniels, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Val?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
All right, that's five zero in approval, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. We are officially adjourned. We'll see everyone back here at 6:00 PM sharp for our meeting. See you all then.